It did used to be up there. They must have, yeah, it was up there. I have no idea.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I would like to call this meeting to order and I'd like to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the, to the meeting this evening. You know, we're going to begin with, with a very special presentation and to, to honor one of our own Tina Palazay. I'd like to welcome the Palazay family here this evening. I'd also like to thank so many members of our, of our staff for being here as well, just for the purpose of celebrating and honoring Tina and her service to our school district. I'd like to start it off by having Ms. Mader, our elementary school principal, come forward and say a few words.
Good evening. I have the honor of talking about one of the best people I've ever known in my life tonight. Tina was a graduate of Baptist Bible College in 1980 and soon after began her teaching career at Bethel Christian School in Pennsylvania. She worked as a preschool and kindergarten teacher in Warsaw and then came to Wayne County where she began substitute teaching. Tina began her SOTUS career in 1999 when she was a one-to-one aide at the elementary school. She then moved to the Head Start Program in 2003 where she stayed until 2014. In 2014, she came back to her home at the elementary school as a classroom teacher. I've had the privilege of knowing Tina for almost two years and she was just simply the best person. Tina's passing came as a shock for all of us. She had been texting with us and her team the week prior and she even emailed with Cassandra and I that week. No one thought that this would happen like it did. The day after her passing, we were able to gather together as a school family to process our feelings and share stories about Tina. Those stories reflected the qualities we always knew about Tina: kindness, caring, compassion, a wicked sense of humor, and a tiny bit of mischief. I'd like to share something written by her classroom aide, Mrs. Kimberly Bennett. They had a wonderful relationship and just a true partnership since Kimberly was hired. Mrs. Palazay was an amazing person. She was a dedicated teacher and the last weeks that she was here, before she couldn't come at all anymore, she would come and stay no matter how awful or in pain she felt. One of the days that she came, if others had known how bad it was for her, she would have been sent home and should have been, but she would have hated and worried about it the whole time. She would come in on the weekends that she really should have stayed home to prep for I and the sub, who would be taking her place. Much of what we would talk about was her concern for her family and those around her and of her love for God and her family and her heartache over them and her many blessings. She was a very good listener. One of the things we learned when we shared stories was that Tina was a popsicle thief and would help herself to any popsicles or ice cream bars that happened to be put in the staff lounge. She would come in once a day to get a popsicle when it was warm and just, "Oh, it'll be okay, no one will miss it," in her cute Tina Palazay way, and no one did. Tina made a huge impact in our school. She was firm and held her students to high standards, yet was their champion and cared deeply for each one. She was always advocating for them and their needs, which leads into one of my favorite Tina stories. In the café, we have exactly 36 three-year-old pre-K chairs for the 36 preschool students we had last year. One day, we were short a chair. I looked around the building, closets, stage, brown building, nothing. Eventually, I put out an all-staff email, nothing, crickets. We figured it out, we moved on, we just did a little creative seating, and then months later, we're in a meeting and Tina admitted that she had taken the chair for a student and had had it in her classroom the entire time. And I walked in one morning to my office, unlocked the door, and there is the chair wrapped in black and white checkered paper because we both had a love for black and white checkered things, with a big bow on it and a box of chocolates to atone for her stealing the chair from me all year. For many of us, Tina was a second mother. She worried about us, told us to get more sleep, asked what we were doing to take care of ourselves, and was a mentor. Staff shared with us how she was always there to listen and was their go-to person in the building. One staff member shared that when they were in on a weekend, Tina was in the copy room. Tina hated it when people would make copies and leave them down there for an extended amount of time. She would throw them all away with a swish of her hands and then she told the other staff member, "Well, you just borrow a rolly chair and roll your copies back down to your room so you don't hurt your back." This is what you do. Early one morning, she came into my office, sat down on the chair across from me, leaned on my desk, and looked at me and goes, "Are you taking care of yourself? You're here before me in the morning, you're here after. You need to make sure you're taking care of yourself. What are you doing for you?" And I sat there and I wasn't sure how to answer her because I was a first-year principal. I wasn't sure. Tina made sure that I was taking care of myself. She was my mom away from home and she was a mother to me the short time I knew her. That's just who she was. Tina especially loved when we had our end-of-the-year garage sale. Teachers would put things out in the hallway that they were planning on getting rid of they didn't need anymore and Tina would find the best treasures. She would search, she would peruse, she'd have her eye on something and she would scurry around to try to get it before anyone else. If we wanted to get rid of anything in the main office, she was the one I called. We had a fake plant and I said, "Call Tina, she might want it." Sure enough, she was like, "I'll take that plant, Jackie," and she did. She was a one-of-a-kind person who gave all, gave with all of her heart and might. She impacted the lives of so many people and children over the years, leaving an imprint on our lives. The musical Wicked is by far one of my favorites. At the end of the second act, Elphaba and Glinda sing the song "For Good" and its lyrics resonate with me today. I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason, bringing something we must learn, and we are led to those who help us most to grow if we let them and we help them in return. Well, I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I am who I am today because I knew you. It well may be that we will never meet again in this lifetime, so let me say before we part, so much of me is made of what I learned from you and you'll be with me like a handprint on my heart. And now, whatever way our stories end, I know you have rewritten mine by being my friend. Tina will forever be a handprint on our hearts.
Thank you, Jackie. You know, just, just a couple words. I've had the privilege of, of knowing Tina and Richard and their family for, I'm going to say maybe almost 25 years now. And I remember being middle school principal and, and Richard and Tina coming into the middle school for, for events. And, you know, I remember it like it was yesterday, you know, just two absolutely loving parents whose children meant the absolute world to them. And I just remember thinking, you know, how wonderful it was at the time to be a principal, having parents and families like that in the district. And then I left for a little while and came back and I was so delighted to see Tina in one of our classrooms when I came back to this new position. I visited her classroom regularly and, and I just enjoyed talking to her and to be honest with you, very rarely did we talk about school. You know, I know the Palazay family already knows this, but I, I just want you to, to hear it from me. When I met and saw Tina and talked with her, the love and compassion that she had for each and every one of you was, was just beyond measure. She always spoke about her husband, about her children, her grandchildren, oh my gosh, she couldn't stop talking about them and how much they meant to her. And that love for children and families just shone through in her life as a teacher and how much she cared about the children that she served here each and every day. How people feel about Tina was so evident when people learned of her passing. Our elementary school staff just absolutely loved her and thought the world of her, as did our children and their families. And I just want you to know that even though she's no longer with us, her legacy, her spirit, her love for children will never, ever, ever be forgotten. And on behalf of our entire school district, I want to thank each and every one of you for sharing her with us and one of the most dedicated educators that I've ever worked with. So on behalf of the SOTUS Central School District, we have a, a crystal ball that we would like to present to you, that it's engraved with Tina's name, that we hope that she'll be able to use at family dinners just as a way to not only remember her, but remember the love that we have for her and that she'll never be forgotten. So I'd like to present that to you now. Okay. We will now move on to 2.2, the recognition of Everett Taylor's tenure. Hold on, Tina.
Yes.
To all of our elementary staff that were able to be here tonight, thank you so much. I know that that meant an awful lot to the Palazay family.
Everett Taylor is currently a teaching assistant, teacher assistant, serving in the library and working with our special education students in classrooms at SOTUS Junior Senior High School. Mr. Taylor worked in manufacturing for over 40 years prior to working in the field of education. After graduating from SUNY Canton with an associate's degree in business administration, he went to work at Xerox Corporation in Webster, New York. He started out working as a dispatcher on the manufacturing floor, then worked in the computer room as a technician. From there, he spent six years in planning using MRP system and material requirements, planning to help keep track of inventory for manufacturing. He was then offered a purchasing agent job. While in this position, he went to Robert's Wesleyan University and obtained an undergraduate degree in corporate organization and management, graduating with a 3.96 GPA. After earning his degree, Everett was offered a management position in the department with 25 buyers reporting to him, and I believe one of those 25 buyers was my father. I think? Yeah. I know, right? It's been a long time. During the last six years of his career at Xerox, he was a systems analyst working to implement new finance and manufacturing systems. After retiring from Xerox, he realized he wasn't fully ready to retire and decided to substitute teach and tutor. He subbed and tutored for Gananda, Wayne, and SOTUS. While at Wayne, Everett subbed for me when I was a special education teacher working in a 611 classroom, and I can tell you that is not for the faint of heart. In 2020, Everett was hired as a teacher assistant. Since 2020, Everett earned certifications for both teacher assistant one and three. Everett states he enjoys his job, feels like he's productive, helping both teachers and students. He states that he really enjoys his work here at SOTUS and he considers our school to be home away from home. It is my great pleasure to honor Mr. Taylor. He has earned tenure in the area of teacher assistant.
Welcome, Mr. Keeney.
Well, as I mentioned in my Board of Ed update, the original impetus behind this presentation was to include students and as you can see, both Sherry Schelfberger and I are without students currently. They were very excited to talk about it. In fact, we included their voice in the presentation. The, it became apparent after I described what a Board of Education meeting was and that it would involve adults who were strangers, the sell became much more difficult, but we did include their voice in this presentation. I want to provide a little bit of context around the coffee shop. You know, standing here next to me is Sherry Schelfberger. She's been really instrumental in getting it up off the ground and working with the students. You know, this is not a, a separate class or anything like that. It's really an extension of the classroom and the skills that they're, they're learning within that setting. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mark Baze, Julie Ruddock, as well as all the other adults and staff that work with those students, for context. You know, for many of our students, when they graduate from school, it really means moving into the, some type of employability, maybe it's the trades, the armed services, or pursuing college. For some of our students, transitioning from school really means transitioning into what we would refer to as adult services. And that can be anything from, you know, working to gain further independence, perhaps transitioning into some type of supported living environment, or working or transferring to one of our community partners such as Wayne A R C to continue to work towards jobs with job-embedded coaches and things like that. to continue to work towards jobs with job embedded coaches and things like that. The coffee shop is really meant to be sort of a stepping stone for that, for that process. So you can see here, you know, really the vision behind it is employability and independence. You know, I asked the students and Sherry, you know, what were some of the skills that we really felt that our students were gaining from this experience? You know, Sherry shared with me taking initiative. And I wanna, do you wanna just kind of focus on that for a minute? If you think about it as being an employer, you know, what's one skill you'd really want your employees to have? And it's actually a skill we spend a lot of time working on our, with our students on. And that's actually doing things like taking initiative, recognizing a problem, formulating a solution, and then following through with the steps to get that done. So as anybody who know, who's ever raised a teenager knows, things that go missing in the house like milk and bread don't automatically appear, especially if they're not put on the grocery list. But Sherry had pointed out that, you know, one of the things that she's observed is we've had students who recognize, begin to recognize they're running low or short on certain items, and will take the initiative to actually stock them. You know, handling money was a big one for our students, obviously a skill that they'll need as they transition into adulthood, counting things. So the, the big adult word for that obviously is inventory. It's tough to run a business if you're not tracking, you know, your losses or your supply chain, obviously. And I think the biggest one, getting along with people. And to translate that a little bit, that means getting along with coworkers. So it's great to hang out with our friends, but sometimes we have to work alongside people that, you know, maybe don't meet that qualification as our best friend. Sherry, was there anything you wanted to add?
If our student were here, she would have told you that she is working on her money skills. And, and I've seen such growth in, in all of the kids that do that. One of them, that's his job every day is to count the whole drawer before he leaves his shift. And he, he's doing really super with that. The, the inventory was real interesting introducing him to that. And now they're starting to become aware of what time of the month it is, and they know that at the end of the month, we have to do that counting. So yeah, they're all, they're all just doing such great things. And one of them is, you know, she says that she's bored when she's there. So we've been brainstorming ideas to, you know, things we can do when we're there. Besides counting money, you can only do that for so much. What can we do to, you know, take up some time and make it busier? So we are going to start baking next week and adding an offer of muffins to our coffee sales. So they're pretty excited about that. Yeah, that kinda is it. I, I really wanna say thanks to everybody that was involved in letting that coffee shop happen. It's been great for the students, it's been fun for me, and hopefully we just keep growing.
I, I wanna point out for a moment, the student that's pictured up there, as Nelson has mentioned, you know, this year I've had a number of students actually down in the Student Services Office where they've been provided tutoring. You'll notice that that photo, it was actually taken on the inside of the booster booth, and it's actually facing out. The, there's a large metal door that typically is used to kind of close the booster booth. How long did it take that student before he was willing to have that door open?
Quite a few weeks. The first time he showed up, he opened the wooden door that goes into the back and saw me and left, and he wouldn't even come in. And we've gotten this far, so, yeah.
So again, just wherever a student is, you know, really working on building some independence. And for this young man, it was just the ability to be around people. As Mrs. Schelfelberger mentioned, you know, future goals for the coffee shop, there's been talk about delivery to staff and the option for breakfast options. I'm pushing for breakfast sandwiches, but it sounds like we're gonna start with muffins.
We are.
All right, that's it, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
First of all, this-
No, I think we're done.
Oh, I did have a little bit.
He was grabbing the mic.
Sorry. Yeah, first of all, this sounds great, really encouraging to hear you doing that. About how many students are like involved in the shop?
Five.
Oh, five, yeah. That was about it, I was just trying to get an idea of the scope.
What are their hours, do they have to get, what are, what are their hours do they have to get there, like, super early to be able to?
I open it at seven so that if there's teachers that wanna grab coffee before students get here, I wanna make sure that's available.
Awesome.
And then they come off the bus after they, you know, take care of their, you know, if they have to stop for meds or anything like that, then they come right down to the coffee shop. And it depends on what Mr. Baze has. We kind of work around his schedule of teaching all of the course stuff. So I have a couple, first thing in the morning, and then one of them goes to the second period class. A different student will come in and stay for the next period. And then at nine thirty-ish, Dylan comes down and does his thing. So I, we don't have any other students in there when he comes because he, he's, you know.
They all have their jobs.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you're ever in the building, I encourage you to go see the kids and get, grab a cup of coffee. It makes their day. And honestly, when I go get a cup of coffee, it makes my day. It, just interacting with them and watching them work so hard to make the correct change and those service skills, it's just a wonderful blessing to our school. So I can't thank Sherry and Mark and Ms. Ruddick enough for all they do for our students in the junior senior high school. So thank you guys. All right. So I have the pleasure of presenting our midterm in Regents data. So I'm gonna start with our English department. So you'll see that we, you have the English seven, then the honors English seven, and then their scores combined. So you'll see that for English seven, eight, and nine on this slide. So when you look at English seven combined, our passing rate was forty-seven, or forty-eight percent, excuse me. Our English eight passing rate was fifty-nine percent, and our English nine passing rate was sixty-eight percent. For English ten, that was a fifty-nine percent. And English ten honors seventy percent. Our English nine through eleven, we have ten students. They're in a self-contained class, and they're working towards, getting towards proficiency. But these students do qualify for the safety net of fifty-five percent. For Spanish, so Spanish one A is reflective of seventh grade. Spanish one B is reflective of eighth grade. So seventh grade Spanish had a passing rate of eighty-two percent. Spanish eight, fifty-eight percent. And then Spanish two is ninth grade. Spanish three is a combination of tenth and eleventh grade, depending on the student's proficiency of the language. And our Spanish four students, that, we have a combination of ten, eleven, and twelfth grade students because we do have native language students who have tested past Spanish two and three. So we do have a tenth grade student in Spanish four. So Spanish two, seventy-one percent proficiency. Spanish three, a hundred percent. And Spanish four, seventy-eight percent. And our Spanish four students are working on their seal of biliteracy. Everyone in the class is working on that project. And if you're familiar with that, students have to, at the end of the year, give a senior project where they demonstrate their proficiency in reading, writing, and speaking in Spanish. And their senior project serves as their proficiency of English. And so they get a seal on their, their diploma when they graduate stating that they're bilingual. So that gives them opportunities to, working opportunities to be interpreters, which is a great opportunity for our kids.
Is that considered like college level or?
Yes, Spanish four is college level, mhm. When it comes to math, so again, we're at seventh grade combined passing rate for the honors. And seventh grade math was forty-nine percent. Math eight, forty-three percent. And algebra one, thirty percent. In geometry, we had a passing rate of sixty-two percent. Algebra two, ninety-one percent. Calculus, a hundred percent. Our self-contained students proficiency was twenty-five percent. Our nine through twelve, zero percent. Math applications is one of our third-year math level courses. It's for students who do struggle, so mostly they're in the self-contained classrooms. We do have some general ed students in that class who do struggle with math. I would have been one of them, to be quite honest with you, if I was in high school because math was not my forte in life. And that's a hundred percent passing rate, and statistics a hundred percent. When we go to science, so the combination of science seven and honors science seven is sixty-one percent. We have science eight is fifty-one percent. Our honors living environment students are eighth grade students who are in the honors, so they're taking the living environment Regents at the end of the year, a hundred percent passing rate. Our living environment students are in ninth grade. Their passing rate was fifty-eight percent. Our honors living environment, oh, so it's, I'm sorry, it was doubled. So if you combine them, it's sixty-five percent, the ninth and the eighth graders. Earth science, so the earth science passing rate was thirty-one percent. The honors, eighty-nine. So that totaled up to, that doesn't look right. But the eighty-nine percent of the students, they pass the honors science, their honors students, and thirty-one percent pass the midterm for science. Chemistry was sixty-three percent, physics eighty-eight percent. In social studies, we have fifty-seven percent with the honors in the general. Social studies eight, sixty-three percent. And global one, that is our ninth graders, sixty-eight percent passing. Global two, that was a seventy percent passing rate with the one hundred and the sixty-four. U.S. history, fifty-four percent for the midterm. So now we're into our Regents. So these are our Regents courses. And generally speaking, these are students who did not pass in June, so they needed to retake it again in January for the credit. So when you look at the breakdown, fifty-five percent of our students did not pass. Sixty-five to eighty-four proficiency was thirty-eight percent. And eighty-five to one hundred, that's mastery is seven percent. And we had two students, two special ed students earn the safety net with a fifty-five and a fifty-nine percent. And in order to get the safety net, you have to earn a fifty-five percent. Algebra, fifty percent passed with master, or I'm sorry, proficiency. Fifty-six percent did not pass, and one student earned the safety net with a sixty percent. In geometry, we had two students take the exam. One was very close, and so neither passed the exam in January. Algebra two, we had one student. She retook the exam to increase her score, and she scored mastery on the exam. In global two, one student earned the safety net with a sixty. We had one student proficient, zero mastery. U.S. history, one student earned proficiency, zero mastery. We had seven students take the exam. And actually, one student just earned the safety net this week. So you guys got this before the committee met. And living environment, seventy, or ten students earned proficiency, zero mastery, and one student earned the safety net with a fifty-six percent. Earth science, three students achieved proficiency, and one student earned the safety net with a fifty-six percent. In chemistry, one student, this particular student challenged himself, so he took, oh no, this is not, that's physics, sorry. One student earned, this student retook the exam to better her score. She earned proficiency. Physics, so this student took half of physics last year, and then half of physics this year. He took the exam and scored an eighty-six percent mastery. So strategy is to meet students where they are. So our teachers have analyzed the January Regents to identify areas where students struggle the most and tailor curriculum accordingly. So tomorrow, actually, during our superintendent's conference day, teachers are looking at their midterm data, whether it's local or the Regents data, and looking to see what skills and content, what are the major skills and content they need to look at? And then what do they have left to teach? And how are they mixing the two together to get the kids across the finish line in June? All of our teachers have already analyzed their midterm data, so it's now, how are we gonna plan for the rest of the year? Teachers will continue to meet with students to discuss areas of need on the Regents' current grades and local assessments, continue to spiral key concepts, practice problems, and, and really focusing on those problem areas and spiraling through. So a good example is entrance tickets, exit tickets, assessments. So spiraling those, putting the old questions from previous units on the current assessment. So it's a combination of both. Review sessions, so we're gonna start in April with Regents' review sessions. We remove the students from AIS who have already passed, and then looked at the data and moved those students in who need it. Continue to support those kids in AIS and after school. We, as MTSS, we meet, teachers meet every week. We look at an MTSS academic attendance and behavior data in a cycle of every three weeks. And so we have what's called trackers. So we track their attendance, we track their academics. Every five weeks, the trackers are updated. The teachers divvy out the students. So you have green, the kids in green are go, they're good. The kids in yellow, they struggle a bit. That's where the teams get involved. And the kids in red who are struggling, that's us, the MTSS, me, counselors, RAPs, social workers. We're looking and working with parents with outside community sources to help them. But at the end of the day, they're all our kids, right? So the teachers are meeting with the kids in yellow and red to support them after school. We're looking, MTSS, we look at the behavioral two and the attendance. So we're making those calls, teachers are making attendance calls. It's really a team effort. We can't, one group of people can't do it alone.
Do you feel like, do you feel like that's a bigger impact? Is the discipline and that sort of thing that you're seeing with the kids, a bigger impact on than others or?
No, I think it's attendance.
It's attendance?
It's attendance. Our teachers are working really hard to get kids after school. They're grouping them. Yeah.
Yeah, they gotta wanna be there, I understand that.
Yep, yep. And, and our teachers are working really hard. I have teachers working through their lunches with kids. We're doing everything we can to support our kids, yep. And our community school staff has been phenomenal with behavioral supports and also helping us do home visits and things like that. Tammy Thiel is amazing. She's our school, community school coordinator. She'll do anything I ask. If I ask her to go do a home visit, I'm on it, and she's on it that day. She's amazing. So I couldn't ask for a better team of people. My building is amazing. Everybody's hands on deck. And then we continue, our teachers continue to receive coaching support from administration, our staff developer, and our instructional coach. So, any questions about that? So, any questions about that?
When you talk about, when they're reassessing data, and they go back and they adjust their curriculum to try to meet the students' needs, is there something that we should be doing, could be doing to help, like, assess that and help with building that curriculum to try to help them be more successful, I guess? Is there, like, specialized coaches that could help do that? Is there, I mean, I know we have people in the building, but I just, I feel like with the data that we're looking at, it looks like we need help to do that, and I just, like, what's the answer?
Heather's been amazing in bringing BOCs in to help, because we're transitioning to the new science test next year.
Yes, I heard about that, yeah.
The earth and space, the biology. So, our science department is meeting with BOCs to work on that curriculum tomorrow. We have Dr. Williams, who comes in and supports our teachers. She's been an amazing support to help our teachers, and she'll come in and work with anybody, and teachers will ask her to come in and, you know, hey, help me out with this, what do you think about this? So, she's been great. Brenda's great. She'll come into any classroom and help our teachers. We will as well. So, I mean, I always ask, and we, I should say we, Paula and Eric and I, we ask our teachers, what do you need? How can we help, right? Heather looks for support for us through BOCs. I mean, we're constantly looking for anything that we can do to best support our students, and we have to support our teachers to support the students.
Yeah, that's where I was going, yeah.
Yep, yep. Any other questions? Yeah.
So, how often do teachers get to meet with their students after school? Because I know there's a lot of meetings after school that teachers unavailable to meet the students. That's, maybe that's why they have to take their lunchtime to meet with kids, so I'm just curious.
Absolutely. So, what, we have a Monday meeting once a month for faculty. They have department meetings on Mondays, so those are two Mondays a month. And then, each team has one day a week that they meet as a team. So, on the opposite days, there are some Mondays where they don't have any meetings. The people who are on the leadership team, they would have a third Monday meeting, okay? But, not every teacher has multiple meetings. So, it all depends on what team they're on. But, they definitely have two meetings a month on Mondays, and then each team meets either Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Fridays, they have. So, if I was on team nine today, and so they would have Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday to work with kids after school, and sometimes a Monday. Any other questions? So, I'm going to go into my next one, okay? Which talks about chronic absenteeism. And thank you for allowing me to, I was out sick when this was presented, so thank you for the grace, I really appreciate it. Nope, it's the chronic absenteeism from February. You got it, right there. Thank you, Dr. Mullin. So, my colleagues have already gone through these things, so I'm going to get right to the nitty-gritty with junior, senior high school. So, in this chart, it breaks down information. So, you'll see, for example, seventh grade, we have eighty-nine total students enrolled. Of those eighty-nine students, eighteen are chronically absent. Of those eighteen students, they have generated seventy-nine referrals as of in February. Of those eighty-nine students, thirteen, or I'm sorry, of those eighteen students who are chronically absent, what I mean by tier two and tier three, I'm going to define this for you. So, tier two is AIS learning labs, okay? So, these are general ed students who, because of their state assessment scores, they're struggling in the class, or their I-Ready scores, and it's not just one score, it's a combination of both, right? Many things. So, they are taken out, and they're in tier two support. So, there are thirteen of the eighteen students who are chronically absent in seventh grade receive AIS support. And the tier three kids are our special education students. Eight out of eighteen receive special education services. When we talk about extended absences, those are E&amp;L students who have gone to Mexico for Christmas, that generally speaking, zero percent, so zero out of those eighteen kids are chronically absent. One student out of seventh grade is considered McKinney-Vento or homeless. When we look at those eighteen students in seventh grade on their I-Ready math, six percent are on grade level, twenty-two percent are teetering, and sixty-one percent of those students are below grade level. And just as a note, at that time, two students were not tested, and one of the two were not enrolled at that time. They had left the district, but I still had the data. For I-Ready, eighteen, of those eighteen students who are chronically absent, six percent were on grade level, six percent were teetering, they're trying to move themselves into the green, and seventy-eight percent were in the red, they're below grade level. So, when we go to eighth grade, eighty-four students total in eighth grade at the time of this presentation was put together. So, twenty-seven out of eighty-four students in eighth grade are considered chronically absent. Those twenty-seven students generated a hundred and thirty-eight referrals. Fourteen out of those twenty-seven students are in AIS, and six out of those twenty-seven students received special education services. Zero of them were on an extended absence. Two, two out of three students, I don't know why I said two out of three, that's interesting. I'm sorry about that. Two are considered McKinney-Vento, but if you look at the I-Ready math and the I-Ready ELA, of these twenty-seven students, nineteen percent of them are on grade level, fifteen percent are moving toward grade level, and forty-four percent are below grade level. And then, the English, nineteen percent are on grade level, nineteen percent are moving towards grade level, and forty-one percent are in the red. So, in ninth grade, we have ninety-seven students, or I'm sorry, ninety-five students. Thirty-one out of those ninety-five students are considered chronically absent, and those chronically absent students generate a hundred and ninety-six referrals as of February. Twenty-three of them are in AIS, six of them are in special education. One of two are, one of them were on extended absence. So, there are two E&amp;L students in this group who are chronically absent. One of them was on extended leave. So, eighty percent are McKinney-Vento, so, and then, they don't do I-Ready in ninth grade. So, so as you can see, when you hit seven, eight, nine, the numbers progressively increase for chronically absentee, chronic absenteeism. In tenth grade, we have seventy-six students. Eighteen out of those seventy-six are chronically absent. Those eighteen students have generated seventy-two referrals as of February. Six out of the eighteen are tier two AIS students, and two out of the eighteen, they are in special education services. One student is McKinney-Vento. One student was on extended leave. Eleventh grade, as you'll see in a lot of our data, eleventh grade actually does better than most of our grade levels. They're better in attendance, better in academics, and their behavior is generally better when we compare grade levels. This doesn't really showcase how great eleventh grade is doing, but eleventh grade has been rocking it all year long. So, of the seventy-one students, seventeen students are chronically absent. Of those seventeen students, eighty-one referrals were generated by them. Six of the seventeen kids are in AIS, and four out of the seventeen are in special education, and one student is considered McKinney-Vento. And in twelfth grade, our sixty-eight students, forty-four percent of them are considered chronically absent. Sixty-nine, of those students, sixty-nine referrals were generated. Many of those referrals are late to schools. Eric does the late to schools, and our twelfth graders are not naughty, they're just late. So, one out of thirty students are, they're in an AIS, and five of them are, receive special education students. We have zero students on extended absence and zero students McKinney-Vento. So, what we do in the junior, senior high school is, like I said, Jim, we meet once a week. So, the MTSS team pushes into our team meetings to give them updates on what we've been working on in our Monday meetings, and we share out data with them on a three-week rotation, academics, attendance, and behavior data. So, we have weekly tier two, tier three, that's our MTSS team. What we do is we make phone calls to families. So, the MTSS team for attendance, we take care of the kids in red. So, the kids who are in yellow are taken care of by the teams. Team eleven does something where they divide up all the kids, and they just make the calls, and then they come back and they share out that information, and that's been working really well for them. We are very faithful by our attendance letters home, and this past cycle, anyone who met the threshold for red, they got a letter in red. And that caused some attention, I got some phone calls. Because, as you know, you get a letter, sometimes it gets filed, and I'll be honest with you, as a mom, I'm the same way sometimes, right? But, if it's in a different color, it's going to bring your attention, and that's exactly what I wanted, and it worked. We make connections to support families inside and outside of school. So, when I talk about inside, we have utilizing our community schools people. Outside of school, Wayne Behavioral Network, CPS connects families to a wide variety of supports. Tammy Thiel makes a ton of home visits. Our counseling office, they make some home visits. Eric has made a significant dent in our late to schools, so he's done a great job with that. And we provide, we create support plans for those tier three kids, and just trying to get them through the door. Why, what is the barrier to get them here? So, when we make the calls, we ask that question, is it laundry? Is it veil-bought, brand-new washers and dryers, right? I went to a home and grabbed laundry two weeks ago from the family. So, whatever the barrier is, we want to break it down so we can get the kids into school. Any questions?
What were the most common barriers?
So, it varies by kids, kid to kid. So, we have, we do have some kids with some chronic physical health conditions, so that's a struggle sometimes when they're not feeling well, but the parents will send them to school. And as long as we have a doctor's note, because we have to be equitable across the board, we excuse them from Eric if they have doctor's notes. But, if they don't, there is a consequence for being late to school. A lot of our drivers coming in, they have had their late arrival, early dismissal taken away if they're not being on time, doing what they're supposed to do, so we've denied them. So, some of it is basic needs, laundry, water. We've had families without water, running water. Mental health, thank you, Paula, Paula and Eric, anything else? Childcare for siblings. So, those are a lot of the things that we see and hear. Any other questions?
Do we have anything to help with cases like childcare for siblings, or?
Honestly, no. I, I don't have anything, but that's an excellent question and something I can talk with Tammy about. I know Tammy will provide childcare for the, when we try to get the families in for the evening programming, so she's done a great job for that. But, we do have prime time, but that's a first-come, first-served basis. And I don't know if we have anything in the community where there is, like, you know, daycare for people who struggle financially. I don't know if Wayne County offers that. But, that's a great question for Jay and for Tammy, and I'll definitely ask him. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to invite my colleagues up, and we're going to talk about I-Ready. And I'm going first again. All right. So, as I've said many times before, our goal is to move students into the green and move students from the red into the areas of yellow. So, we move from red to yellow, yellow to green. That's our goal. So, at the beginning of the school year, twenty-six percent or thirty-nine students were scoring on or above grade level in reading, and at the mid-year mark, twenty-seven percent or forty-two students were scoring on or above grade level. When we look at our yellow portions of the graph, our goal is to push students into the green and pull them out of the red. And at the start of the school year, eighteen percent or twenty-eight students were on, were one grade level below, and at the mid-year point, twenty percent or thirty students were reading one grade level below their peers. The students in red are two to three grade levels below where they should be. At the beginning of the school year, fifty-six percent or eighty-five students fell in this range. This has decreased to fifty-two. It's not a big jump, I'm going to be honest with you. We are kind of just staying the course. We're not making a lot of gains that we'd like to see. So, really, this equates to five students who've either moved into the solid red or yellow portions of the graph. Fifty-two percent of our students working two to three grade levels below is not where we want to be. And I-Ready revealed at the mid-year mark that nine percent of our students are still struggling with phonics, and those students receive special education services. Fifty-three percent of our students struggle with reading comprehension. So, when we look at seventh grade and eighth grade, we break them apart. Eighty-one out of eighty-three students were assessed. Students on or above grade level increased by two percent, and there was a three, three percent decrease in students two or three grade levels below where they should be. I mean, we made, we didn't go backwards, but that's not the gains we want to see by any means. In eighth grade, seventy-eight out of eighty-one students were assessed. Students on or above grade level increased by one percent, and there was a two percent decrease in students two to three grade levels below where they should be. So, in looking at the state assessment data, so, I'm sorry, I-Ready, from year to year, I'm sorry, from the I-Ready from year to year, seventh grade historically has been inconsistent. They've gone up and down, and as a cohort, they have gone down, then slightly increased a bit. In eighth grade, when you look at this cohort of students, their reading level has decreased from twenty-twenty-one, from twenty-seven percent to twenty-nine percent, and when you look at them historically, they've decreased from twenty-nine to twenty-four percent. And in looking at the, so when we look at this And in looking at the um, so when we look at this data, it's, it's really we're not, we're not, we're going up, we're going down. We're not, we want to see up. We want to keep going up and that's, this is not where we should be. Um, in the math, the area of math, we're doing a bit better. Um, at the beginning of the school year, 30% of students or 45 students were on or above grade level in math. And by the mid-year mark, we've increased this percentage um of students on or above grade level to 34%. The students in red, two to three grade levels below where they should be. Um, statistically speaking, there hasn't been much movement as we'd like to see. As I've said in the reading, um, at the beginning of the school year, 40% or 60 students fell in this range. At the mid-year, 37% fell in this range. So we dropped a bit. And iReady revealed that overall in 7th and 8th grade, 38% of our students are struggling with number and operations. 45% of students are struggling with algebra and algebraic thinking. 47% of students are struggling with measurement and data. And 50% of our students struggle with geometry. So when we break apart grade seven and eight, 100% of our students in 7th grade were tested. Uh, students on or above grade level increased by 2%. And there was a 6% decrease in students uh two to three grade levels below. In 8th grade, 79 out of 80 students were assessed. Students on or above grade level increased by 5%. And there was a 1% decrease in students two to three grade levels below where they should be. So when we look at the iReady historically, um, so you can tell in 7th grade that, you know, from COVID, the 2020 year, they go up and then they keep going up. So that's a good thing. And then in 8th grade, they go up and they go down. Um, when you look at the cohort, 7th grade cohort historically, they start at 19, they go up, they go up, they go up. So they're going up and they're doing pretty well at 41. But when you look at 8th grade, uh, the cohort from uh COVID, they go up and then they go down. Um, so it could be a myriad of things. It could be that iReady, they're struggling to buy in. Um, it could be that, it could be teenager. It could be a lot of different things or it could be their skills that they're just inconsistent in their skills. And we'll talk a little bit at the end about what we're going to do to combat this. So I'm going to turn it over to Megan.
All right. So for the intermediate school, if we take a look at our reading data, this first one is, I'm sorry about that. Uh, this first one is our entire school, so fourth to sixth grade. So if you take a look, um, again, the goal is to be moving students out of the red and to getting more students into the green. So if you take a look, um, as a whole school, the students who are on or above grade level increased by 10%. And then our students that are um two or more grade levels below, again, this is for the whole school, decreased by 12%. Statistically, our yellow stayed roughly the same. We um moved um some more and went up a few points in, a few percentage points in the yellow. Uh, for reading, this is the grade level breakdown. So if you take a look at 4th grade, they were able to move um our students from, I'm starting with the red this time. So 36% of students at the very beginning of the year were um at that two or more levels below or grade levels below, excuse me, moved that into 25%. And then we're able to move the students who are performing on or above grade level from 23% to 33% total. In 5th grade, we went from 46% of students being two or more grade levels below down to 30%. And then went the same percentage points up of students who were um reading on or above grade level, so from 20% to 36%. And then we did not see as significant a change in the students who were on or above grade level in 6th grade. It went up 3%. But we did see a pretty decent 10% decrease in the students who were um below grade level, two or more levels below. And then again, some more of those kids moved um out of the red and into the yellow, that one grade level below. And this is our cohort data. And so if you take a look, you can see that, you know, at times it can be um just really depends. We had some of that up and down movement as well in 4th, 5th and 6th grade for our reading. And then cohort wise, um, you can see that, you know, as they tend to get a little bit older, um, if they're going to have those gaps, the gaps become more obvious as they are getting up in grades. When we go to math, again, we, um, our performance in math, um, this is the school data as a whole. So if we take a look um at the beginning of the school year, those students who are on or above grade level scored 18% of them and they more than doubled that um to 39%. The um yellow, again, we want to move students um from the red to the yellow, from the yellow to the greens. So we went from 47% at the beginning to 41. And then at the beginning of the school year in math, we had 35% of our students performing um two or more years below grade level in math. And we're able to bring that down to 20% for the school as a whole. And then if we break down the grade levels, I'm going to start with the red again. So 4th grade originally at the beginning of the year had 38% of their students um who were two or more grade levels behind. That is now down to 16%. And then 10% of the students were on or above grade level. And as you can see, there were actually, those students were actually all in the on-grade level. And then if we take a look, um, that has increased by 25% um of those students who now mid-year, that was in January, are above, on or above grade level, excuse me. 5th grade um went from 29% below to 19% below. Um, moved students really, if you take a look, um, we had a, a, a really large cohort of kids that were in that yellow, that one grade level below, 55%. Got that down to 38% and then showed a significant increase in students who were on or above in math from 16% to 43%. And then as far as 6th grade goes, we were able to move um from 35% of students that were two or more levels below to 21% and move up 10 percentage points of students who are on or above grade level from 31% to 41%. And then as far as the um cohort data and the historical data, again, for the iReady math, um, you can see that, you know, historically, the kids really kind of go up every year. And that is really through um both across, so just the grade level. So 4th grade each year. But then if you take a look at, when we go diagonally, you can see like, for example, in 22, 23, 31% of students in 4th grade were on or above grade level, went up to 37% in 5th grade, up again to 41% in 6th grade. So we look at both of those, how the increases are decreasing or what it looks like for um both the grade level, but also as that cohort of kids moves up into the next um grade level. We track that as well. Any questions about the intermediate school iReady data?
All right, so I am the anchor leg of the data train this evening. So um, we're going to start with the elementary reading data. So I think it's important to remember that as we are looking at iReady, they're being tested on standards that are at their current grade level. It's only midway through the year, so obviously they've not been exposed or taught all of those standards yet that they may be being tested on. So my focus was looking at our students, are we making movement from the red to the yellow and the yellow to the green? And as you look at this first chart, you can see that yes, that is happening across the building in reading. When we break it down into our individual grade levels, you're able to see um those, into those changes. Um, I'm just very proud of the 3rd grade cohort right now. They're one of our first cohorts that have had uh benchmark phonics since they were in 1st grade. And I think as we look through this data and reflect on it, we're really going to see that that is helping them with their ELA skills. Um, so that's encouraging as we continue to um keep with that program. When we look at our math data, so remember that our Eureka Math Square curriculum is a spiral-based curriculum. Um, so there are definitely things, when we look at our module data, it's a very different story than what we're looking at here with um our iReady data. Um, if you remember last year, it looked very similar, but then when we got to our June, our final diagnostic looked much better and really reflective of where we feel like our students ended. So looking at the mid-year comparison for grade levels, um, I just think that going from the red to the yellow of looking at that, 3rd grade went from 39% and dropped down to 22%. 2nd grade went 47% and dropped down to 19%. And 1st grade went 24% and dropping down to 8% in the red. And I think that's huge because now we're getting kiddos that are within their grade level standards. They're approaching proficiency and that's where we want them to be. We don't want them one or two grade levels behind. We want them in those attainable bands of information. So here you'll see the next two slides show the historical data and trends for each cohort. Um, our numbers are kind of all over the place and um have not been able to figure out a rhyme or reason to that. Um, but we continue to look at it as some of our historical data and to see where the students grow and progress. So does anyone have any questions on iReady data before I move into FMP? Okay, so this is actually the last time I will be presenting to you on FMP data. Um, based on everything we've heard in our science of reading trainings and conferences we've been to, um, the data is somewhat uh subjective. And so they've made recommendations to switch to other assessments to ensure that we're getting data that we can truly use um to be reflective and to differentiate our instruction based on that data. Um, so we're looking at the kindergarten FMP. And um, the kindergarten team and I met at the beginning of December because we saw that some of the students were struggling. The biggest thing that we're noticing right now with kindergarten is that our students are able to decode, so break sounds apart, but they're struggling to recode, put them back together and be, have that automaticity with knowing those words. So we took a pause for two weeks, focused on uh consonant vowel consonant words with short A sound and really solidified that to ensure that they had those foundational skills before we moved on to introducing um the different vowel sounds with short I, E, O and U. Um, because if they're not able to do it with short A, introducing more vowels are just going to confuse them more. So we really wanted to solidify those skills um and make sure that they were in a good spot. We continue to look at their data carefully because we know that if they don't have those foundational skills, they're going to struggle late as they get into the older grade bands. So really making sure they have those skills solidified before they leave kindergarten. And then you'll see the historical data for kindergarten across um the last several years. And you can see where we're, we're at right now um in the winter of 2025. With 1st grade, um, again, looking at the kiddos that dropped from red to yellow, yes, there's 45% in the yellow ink at the kindergarten level, but they went from being pre-A, so having the lack of those foundational skills, to being readers. And that is huge when you look at it. So as they start to break the code of understanding language, they're gaining those skills and feeling better about themselves as readers. Um, when talking with the 1st grade team, again, students are struggling with the automaticity of being able to decode, recode and then remember those words. So really working in that fluency and application of skills, um, we're noticing that they're able to do it sometimes in isolation, but then putting it into context within a sentence for a reader, that's where we tend to see some of the breakdown. So making sure that we're really focusing on the application of skills um to make sure that our kiddos are in a good spot. And then you'll see the cohort historical data here. So very comparable to last year. Um, and then I feel like 2nd and 3rd grade is our success stories because they're building on those foundational skills that our kindergarten and 1st grade teachers worked on so hard over the last couple of years. Um, right now, we've got 56% on or above grade level, which is just huge. Like we're making those gains, we're seeing that growth, that progress. We know we're on the right track. We just have to keep, stay the course and really make sure that the foundational skills are being acquired by our students. Then historical data for 2nd grade. And then we've got 3rd grade with 70% of our students on or above grade level. We're almost there. I would love to see 80, 85% on or above grade level in the next couple of years with our other data that we're starting to roll out. Um, but you know, we're, we're doing the right work. We know that as a building. And then our historical data for 3rd grade over the last several years is here. And now moving forward, um, as I said, we're really focusing on the foundational skills in the early literacy grades. Some things that we've been working on, um, and what we're going to roll out this summer, we're having a vertical conversation with UPK kindergarten and 1st grade to ensure that the progression of skills is solidified and that our students are leaving each grade level with those foundational skills so that the next grade level can take off and be running with instruction and not having to make up skills. Um, you know, we're, we're really working on the application of a lot of those phonics skills into text. And then um making sure that we're constantly reviewing our data. That is so important and that we're being reflective of our data and using that data to drive our instructional practices at the tier one level. Any questions for the elementary school?
Okay. As far, you're tall. As far as the intermediate school goes, um, again, we're continuing our targeted math and literacy interventions. That's um both within the classroom during our two 40-minute intervention blocks um as well as um with intensive math and reading intervention, resource room, um, ENL services, ENL's not an intervention. Um, but uh continuing with those. Um, we have grade level data meetings, MTSS data review and individual data discussions. We actually just ended um two days of data meetings with uh grade level teams. Ongoing support, we continue to um work to strengthen that tier one instruction. So that whole group instruction that all students are getting at grade level. Our Eureka Math Square program, we are halfway through our second year. And then also, again, as Jackie mentioned, using that science of reading research at all grade levels to really figure out, um, to use the research, the science, to know how our children learn to read best. Um, benchmark phonics, um, you've heard Jackie talk about it for a couple of years. Um, that started in the elementary school. Um, and I know I even heard Tina say that, um, you know, I think at the 7th grade, the iReady was showing that a lot of those 7th graders really had some phonics gaps as well. And so one of the things that we're trying to do is to keep rolling that up. So our 4th graders have rolled up with it. Um, and we'll roll up to 5th grade next year as well. Um, it's a very short um portion of their tier one instruction. The kids know the routines. Um, I'm pretty sure that they taught the 4th grade teachers um how to do it because they already knew all the routines, all, everything that was going to go on. And they definitely told them if they were uh not doing it the way they thought. Um, but that's become embedded directly into their tier one instruction. And then at 6th grade, we are adopting the Amplify ELA curriculum. Um, and we are going to, after state testing, our 6th grade teachers and 7th and 8th grade as well are going to be um teaching one of their units um from Amplify ELA um this year. So at 6th grade, we're going to be doing the Titanic unit, um, which sounds really cool. So um, we'll go through and doing that is we just really update um our curriculums and everything um to best support our students. Any questions about the intermediate school? All right. All right.
So one thing that we didn't do last year that, we started at the end of last year, is we, even though it's at the bottom, we met as a cohesive team, ELA, math, ENL, special ed's, teachers in seventh and eighth grade to really look at iReady and to, what are we going to do to improve this data? Because I'll be honest with you, we have been struggling. And what our teachers do is they do do individual goal setting with students, so it's really important for our kids at the secondary level to know where they are. It's important to sit down with them and say, okay, do you really realize that you're reading at a third grade level? Is this the best you can do? And a lot of our students will say, no, it's not, that's not really where I'm really at, or I rushed, or I did this, or I did that, right? But it, it kind of shocks their system a bit for them to see, oh, this test is telling me I'm reading at the third grade level. So what we've done is when the kids are below grade level, they have to do two lessons a week. They have to do mandatory twenty minutes of iReady work in their study halls and AIS. We continue to target math and literacy interventions, so they're going to AIS. One thing that we did, we collapsed, we looked at tenth grade, so Ms. Watt has had two sections of tenth grade and one section was lower than the other, so we combined the two sections together so that she could do ninth period AIS, two groups. And we were able to bring in more ENL students into that group and service more students who are struggling to open up another AIS. So looking at different ways that we can manipulate our schedule to give our kids more support. We are also looking at the data all the time at MTSS, you know, is there a correlation between their grades, between their iReady scores, between their state assessments? And just trying to pump them up. So what we're doing is, so at our last meeting, we talked about, we need to celebrate the kids who are doing the right thing. And I'm not going to tell you what it is because this is live streamed and I don't want the kids to know what we're doing next week, so that'll be in my next board report. But we are going to celebrate the kids who have been doing the right thing and doing the work constantly, right? So there is a big surprise for them this week. And then in the hopes when they're, the peers see that what we're providing to them, we're going to do something big again at the thirty-five-week mark to encourage those kids that, you know, haven't been making the choices of doing their lessons to do them because we see a correlation of when you do the lessons, the diagnostics results show that they have done the lessons, that they have done the work. The other thing our teachers are doing are class wars, so doing some competitions, our classes have, or our tier, teams have some money to spend out of our PBIS budget to get the kids hyped to do more lessons. And so when they're doing those lessons, we also see those results in the state assessment scores too. So we're really spiraling, we're doing everything we can to get the kids to do the work. Any questions for me?
I have a question that's kind of like a generalized question. I don't know if it's necessarily just for you. It's more about iReady. When kids have like a IEP or five oh four plan, whichever you want to call it, I get confused there, but, you know, some may have anxiety issues, some may have issues just flat-out sitting still and working on a computer and they have, you know, different things in place to help with that. What do we, how does that work with, with iReady? Like, how do we assist them? It's supposed to kind of be self-driven, right?
Right.
So what, how do we do that? How does that?
So we can tailor their lessons. So if they, if, if their diagnostic reads a certain level but they're struggling, we can tailor it to meet them where they are. And this goes for the kids who are above grade level too. We had one kid email me, actually, God bless them, say, Dr. Peets, this is too low for me and I'm bored. How do I get my level increased? So that was two weeks ago. That was the best email I ever got in a very long time. So Ms. Miller actually adjusted that student's iReady to make it more challenging for that student. We can also adjust the lesson, so if it's causing the student anxiety, they can stay after school. Mr. White, Ms. Infande, Mr. Barber, Ms. Miller, Ms. Watt, Ms. Griffith, they all stay after school with kids to help them if they're struggling. I've worked with kids who are struggling, yeah, to help them.
I witnessed, I witnessed an individual just go through this iReady, spend like so much time trying to get their, get ready to the final lesson and literally like accidentally click the wrong button because they're just trying to get done. And it's just, it's a half an hour of tears.
Yep. And they have to pass the lesson.
You have to pass, otherwise you have to start over and go back through another half an hour with it. So, I mean, I persuaded them to continue, but it's just difficult. I was just curious. I mean, that's just one, but I, I was assuming with some of these other issues that it might be more, so.
Yeah, so parents can.
Definitely affecting these numbers.
Yeah, so parents can call us, email us. No child should be crying at home over iReady. So if they're struggling, we can work, adjust the levels so that they're feeling some success because success breeds success. We don't want them frustrated. That's not the point.
He made it.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Any questions about the information, guys? Do you have any public participation? All right. We'll go on to matters for board discussion. We're going to talk about the nomination pertaining to a student member.
All right. So, so we put a slide up on the, the screen just so, so folks can see it and you have it in your packet as well. So as of July first, it's required that we have an ex officio student on the Board of Education, required of all, all boards in New York State. So the next slide is the role of the student member, just as a reminder to folks. So the board member cannot vote, can't go to executive session, cannot attend any other meetings or hearings, not open to the public unless the board invites them. And then the student must have attended our high school for at least one year prior to selection. So that's, that's some of the, the roles and, in membership requirements. So just a couple conversations, questions for conversations, these are things that have, have come up in conversations with other superintendents that they've been asking their board. Term limits, is it one year or two year? That'll determine what grade level the student should be in. You know, does it matter if the, the selected student is a child or someone living with a current Board of Education member? That's been discussed in other places. And then something that we can further discuss that we don't necessarily have to nail down today, but, you know, what expectations do you have of the student board member in terms of, will he or she provide reports to the board? You know, what is it that you expect of him and her and how do you want that member to be a conduit to the Board of Education? So that, that's something that we could continue to, to work on. But the reason we're bringing this to you tonight is we need to have a, a policy in place by July first. And as you know, the draft policy with it go on the board agenda one month and then the next month it would actually be approved. So we want to get this on, you know, April or May at the latest so that way it can be approved at the latest at the June meeting. So the next slide is student selection. So this student member is, is a member, as you know, on the Board of Education. So because the student is sitting on the Board of Education with all of you, it's your responsibility to actually decide how you want that student to be selected. So each of these bullets are actual bullets that were put out by the state that boards can select from. So the choices are, the student has been elected as a student president of the high school, this would be our student council president, that's one option. Second option is a student elected by the student body. So that would go up for election as the ex officio member of the Board of Education. The student body would vote and the winner would then serve on the board. A student selected by the high school student council, so the student council can make this decision. Another one is Tina Peets, the principal can make a decision. Another one is I can make the decision. Or the last one would be the student would be selected by majority vote of the Board of Education. What some more boards have done with the last option is they've created an application process where students that were interested completing the application and then the board actually interviews those students and makes a decision based on the information that the student provides and the interview process. So those are the options that you have and, you know, I think at the next point, you know, Jason, if you could, you know, kind of lead the discussion and, and whatever the board decides, whatever works for you will make happen.
All right. I think the easiest way is to kind of, why don't we start right there with our student selection and we can kind of decide, talking, the best way to select our student, does anybody have any opinions as to how they would recommend out of those options or possibly?
Well, what are we, are we going to do one or two-year terms? Are we going to allow the juniors or the seniors? Should we go for a senior on that? Because that's going to kind of deflect on how we go with the selection of it. You know, if you're going student body, you're going to open it up to, what, junior, senior or just senior?
I don't know. I think, my personal opinion, I, I feel like it, it could be either way. My, if you guys want to hear my view on all of this, I feel like you could be a junior or senior. I feel like that's acceptable and I, but I also feel like a one-year term is acceptable because I, I want to make sure that we get, for one, get more students involved throughout the years rather than just one student involved for two years. Maintain interest because, I mean, students may get on the board and realize it's not for them. I mean, some kids have interest in political science and some people don't, you know, and I.
Could I, could I ask a clarifying question? Tina, I hope you know the answer to this because I'm not a hundred percent sure. I just got thinking about this. Student council president, can that be anybody in grades nine through twelve?
Yes.
So that's, I, I don't know how that fits in, not to complicate matters, but I just got thinking, wait a minute, the student council president could be a freshman, but yet the student council president can change every year based on election. So I'm not trying to complicate it, but I did want to bring that out there, that that could, that could make a difference. I don't know.
That's something to consider.
One thing I'd like to kind of throw in.
Hit the mic.
Yeah. Throw into consideration too would be transportation, right? Most seniors, I'm assuming, are driving. I mean, the student parking lot isn't as full as it used to be, but ninth, tenth, then you got to rely on parents to get here, not, if they're missing every meeting, then there's really kind of pointless. Just one other thing to keep in mind there.
I feel like maturity's a big thing once you get to eleventh and twelfth, it's much different than a ninth grader. I would think so. A lot of people in here could agree to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we're talking one-year term.
Yeah.
If we're talking one-year terms, I'd probably lean towards, like, juniors can apply but to serve mainly during their senior term, or senior year. Is there, whether it's a one or two-year term, is it supposed to coincide with like the beginning of a regular board member's term?
No, it's just, it's just, it's just something that just.
So we could either do it that way or it could be towards the end of the year they apply and then maybe.
And then they would start in September or they'd start in summer.
July first.
July first.
Same, they, they start the same ti, I believe, right, they start the same time.
July first, okay. So I, I like the idea of, like, an application process where anybody, you know, I suppose in their junior year can apply for it, whereas also like teachers, principals, counselors could think about students that they want to encourage to go for it, who they think might benefit from it. And I, I suppose there probably had to be maybe some requirements, you know, like, you know, meet an academic threshold, like you're passing your classes in order to, to qualify for your application to be considered. But, yeah, again, I, I like the idea of anybody in, say, the junior class being able to apply for it and then it's just a matter of who and how they, we select from those.
So you're thinking at the end of their junior year, they would apply for their senior year, otherwise they'd be applying in their sophomore year.
Right.
If we wanted to accept a junior into the program.
So could you do, you can still do a junior for a year, then in the next year have another, could you, if they apply, you could have a junior student, sophomore one year, then be a junior the next year, just make them one-year terms?
Yeah.
So you, so you wouldn't have the same student.
You're saying two different things, different than what he is.
So you wouldn't have a student doing two years, you'd have either one, maybe a junior is one year and a senior the next year, so they're not, they don't get two years, they just get one year.
Okay.
For the exposure.
We're all pretty much agreed on the one-year term?
I agree, one year.
So Brian's leaning more towards applying junior year to be on the board and his senior year, you're saying junior year and either, so you would do it at the end of sophomore. Does any, anybody have any, I mean, anybody else?
I think it makes sense for, like we're saying, for an upperclassman because, you know, being able to get here, it's going to be much tougher. So I'm leaning more towards a senior or a junior, either way. I mean, you have some juniors that drive. So one-year term, junior year, senior year, it's my preference.
Do we feel like it should be like some sort of interview process and the board makes that decision on who they pick or do we let the student body pick it?
My personal thoughts are I think the student body should be involved. I think it'll help them be involved in more of what's going on here.
I agree.
Maybe bring more attention to what's happening and get some more input, even if they're not on that.
What if you do an application process? Anyone can apply or a principal or superintendent can encourage people to apply, but it's up to the student to actually apply and then do an interview process like you would for any type of job and then maybe the student council makes the final decision? That kind of hits multiple areas and it's realistic of what would happen in other areas.
So what do you think about a petition, just like we would have to do, like maybe not twenty-five, but maybe ten signatures of their peers so they can kind of get the idea of how it happens? I mean, it's more of a formality than the actual full petition that they're doing.
I, I, I agree with that. A petition, something to actively engage anyone who's interested in applying to make sure that they're invested, putting some work in ahead of time might show initiative, dedication and a commitment to being on the board and playing an active role because that's really what we're going for here. We don't want a token student, board member, we want somebody who will contribute, pay attention and help us as board members. Having them play an active part in an application process is a very good start to getting the kind of, of person that we're looking for, the kind of student with commitment.
So you agree on like a ten-signature petition?
And, and then what, kind of campaign on it and then student council picks it?
I think that they should have a vote nine through twelve, is my personal opinion.
For the whole grade?
It would be, it wouldn't be a little process, it would be just a general election.
That's what I think they should have an election. I think the students should vote on it. I personally do. Maybe something, I don't know if you can do it during forum where you can get a little more advertisement as to what's going on. I'm not against them having to write a, a reason of interest as to why, something small that they want to do, a reason why they want to be on the board or a reason, like maybe something they can do. It's, like, kind of follow a similar format as to, like, what we have to do and it'll help them understand why they're even doing it to begin with.
Can I interject?
Of course.
So on May third, we're doing the Spring Fest, so Jen and, do you want to be a member?
Yeah, I was, yeah, just hit the mic and, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So during Spring Fest in, at the end of May, I met with Jen Young and Lisa Miller, who are the advisors of student council and all of the students who are running for positions the following year have to give a speech in front of the student body.
Okay.
So this may be an opportunity for whoever wants to run for. So, this may be an opportunity for whoever wants to run for the board, they do the same. Just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
We're doing the voting that same day, you guys.
I have to touch base with them. I'm not sure if they're gonna do the voting that same day. But all the speeches, anyone who wants to run for office will have to give a speech. But, um, if you're gonna be the, I believe, uh, how they wanna set this up, this would be the same as the class president, the, or the school student council president. They would have to speak in front of the whole student body. But if you're like, grade level president, you would speak to your grade level, not the whole student body. Does that make sense? So if you're a, a grade level president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, you're just gonna speak to your grade level. But if you're student council, you're representing the entire nine through twelve, you're going to speak in front of all of nine through twelve. So, that would also include this position as well.
Technology question, how do you do the voting? I'm assuming it's something electronic?
Probably a Google form.
Is it like?
Electronic.
Not, is it like, how do you keep them from like putting in multiple votes? So it becomes a popularity contest versus a?
We, we'd have to talk to Dr. Mullin. She's the tech lady.
I'm just asking, is there a? Okay.
Come on over, Dr. Mullin.
She's been planning for this.
There's a setting on Google forms where you can only allow one person per email address to submit one form.
Thank you. Way above, like what I can.
Jason, I'm, I'm okay with it if it ends up being a whole student body election. But personally, I'd probably prefer it be like the student council. Just so it gets, ends up getting picked on a different criteria than like, stuff like the student council president usually gets picked, or, you know, the other elections go. It's less likely to be a popularity contest and more, I mean, considered by a few people. Like, what are we really looking for in this person?
I guess my only, just for the purpose of debating this, my only point there would, like, to argue that would be, student council is a whole student body-driven thing, right? Like you can, so the same idea, like, so anybody in student council could also be on student council based on a popularity contest? If that's what you're insinuating. So I would think that like, no, I'm, and I'm not picking on it, I'm just saying like, so, being on the board is the same idea. My thought is, versus having four people, you'd have a fifth person involved doing something different. Rather than just sticking with one of the four being the ones that are on the board. It gives like another job or purpose for a child to be involved in something more than just school.
If I may, the student, uh, body president has always been our top kids. In the last five years I've been here, like, the, the student body president has been a very responsible, highly respected, always follows through. They're top kids, they're top notch, so.
Cause it brings me to the other thing. What if nobody but, say, a student council member applies?
I'm not.
You know?
My thoughts aren't that it can't be, but that it opens it up.
No, I agree, but I'm just saying if all of a sudden, nobody throws their name in the hat, then, eh, but we have to have one, right?
That could happen anyway. I, I doubt it, but that could happen.
I get it, but I'm saying, we, we have to have.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you can't be on student council, I'm just saying it can be somebody other than student council as well.
Right.
That's my, I mean, I'm just one person, I just, that's my thought. Jim, do you have any? Okay, I see the wheels turning.
So you're opening up to everybody.
I mean, I, I was thinking that at some point it would be, if, like, the principal, can they set up a committee with students and staff members to maybe choose the person who wrote, wrote something or spoke at the meeting or something like that? So, I don't know the best, there is no easy way to do this. It's, um, it's a difficult.
Yeah.
Choice to make, so it's not, I mean, I, I like the idea of teachers, like, you know the students. I, we really don't know all the students that well. And your staff knows the students, and the students know the students. So, I think that'd be a logical choice to have maybe them have some type of committee, and then you, you choose who that might be or something. Somehow, they do a presentation or something, whatever that looks like, so that's just my idea, so.
I.
I, I agree with that. I'd also like to see, at a minimum, a hybrid selection model. Meaning, staff and staffer board members along with students. So, there's some balance. So, it is a little different than the student, student council selection. I mean, this is a different, this is a, a different thing, it's something different. Marking that with a different process might, might be different. This is, this is groundbreaking, this is new. It's going to be difficult to pick one direction. And, just with the decision that's made for this year, doesn't mean that it's going to be the same decision-making process in five years. But I think, again, being the first year, we're all green at this. Having a hybrid model where we have staff members and students pick. Again, it's, it's different, we're not just judging an individual by adults, or judging an individual, a student, by other students. We get some sort of balance.
Sarah, you just hit on a point that I was gonna add. I think that we should be very clear from the start that this is how we're doing it this year. But we're very open to making changes based on feedback in future years.
Oh yeah, that's what's easy about this, is, is you can update your policy every year. Very simple to do.
I think we should be clear about that. Like, this is a new thing, we're not entirely positive how we wanna do it, we're open to feedback from students.
I mean, if you wanna take everything that's kind of, I think we can morph all the ideas into one. Where if you, if you wanted to do the petitions, you could do that to make sure somebody has support. We could put together an application packet, like with, with platforms that answer questions and why they wanna do that. And then, kind of like what you do when you're interviewing staff members, that could almost be their resume and cover letter, if you will. And then, you know, Tina could create a committee of staff members, um, you know, and, and students, you know, representative of the, of the high school grades. And, um, and interview anybody who had the, uh, who had the petitions and turned in their packet and, and have it go. If that's what you want, that's pretty simple to do.
And I actually like having them do a resume and cover letter, because it integrates the real world with what they're learning in CAM. So I really like that idea.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that sounds, sounds good. I mean, we're gonna look at it at next board meeting, anyway, right?
Yeah, if you'd, um, if, if that's what you would like to do. Regina, did you get all those down? Okay, thank you.
I've been trying to.
Cause Regina and I are gonna have to figure out the policy. So, um, we can, we can take that and we can morph that into a, uh, you know, into a, into a draft policy. And, uh, and, you know, as soon as we get that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll share that with you, you know, by email. And then you could take a look at it, and then we can, uh, we can discuss it the next meeting, make any changes, think about it some more. And then we can put it on for a first read in May and approval in June.
Um, couple other questions that you had in there?
Yeah.
I think that sounds good though, Nelson.
Okay.
Um, thoughts on the selected student being a child of someone living with a current board member? I don't think that's a good idea personally. I just, I don't. Anybody else? I, I mean, I.
Are we gonna allow any staff member?
I think.
To, to also not be qualified?
I don't, I don't mind the staff so much, I just don't think that, I, I don't want my son or daughter sitting up here with me. I don't think that it needs to, it, it creates, uh, the idea that kids are gonna wanna go home and continue conversations that, that happen at board meetings. Or, I just, not that that's necessarily negative, but I just, I, I just don't think it's a good idea. I don't. Yeah, I don't, I don't like that, that, being unfair. Maybe they made it on the board because dad's on the board, or whatever. And that's the, the one thing that I have about you guys necessarily having to pick a student. I don't want those same optics of, oh, they picked so-and-so, why did they do that? You know, I, I wanted my kid to be on, well, they don't like my kid. I, I just, that's why the student body being involved as much as they possibly can can help with that. That's my personal feelings there.
And you, sorry I'm late, by the way, I just got in. But I sent an email out, so you guys know my feelings about it. My thinking, if it's chosen by the students, then it doesn't really matter who the student is, right? If, if the whole students, kids pick your kid, then there's really nothing that anybody can say that it was a preferential thing, because you didn't, we had nothing to do with it. Now, if we decide to do it by staff, or by interview committee, by the board, then yes, I can see how somebody can construe that as being favoritism. But if it's completely chosen by the students via vote, then it, it should be relevant. You could argue that, uh, any staff member, I mean, I can see, you know, a favorite teacher's, uh, kid can be, can be chosen just because of that. So I mean, it's one of those things that if, if you allow the, the students to decide, then we should have no criteria who's available to, to serve. You're just, you're just opening it up for more scrutiny by us choosing. Regardless of who it is. We can pick your child, and you can say, well, it was chosen because we decided. But if you let the students decide, then we, we're out of it, we're, just like any public election.
Any difference of opinion there? I mean, it's valid points, but, any difference? It contradicts what we originally said, but it's a valid point. I don't disagree with that if the student body's picking it, I mean.
Don't mean to interrupt, but, obviously, we're here because we care about our kids' education, right? If, if one of our kids has this opportunity, and it's being taken away because of perception, how is that fair to our child? We're doing what we can to make sure that all the students succeed. But by not allowing our, our kids to, to be part of it, you're, you're removing one extra step that they can use to succeed in the future.
Before we really pick on how or who does it?
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Loud enough. I, I mean, so before we really go any further, we have to just nail down who's gonna pick. And then we can do the finer details in after that. Because if we're gonna open it up to just the entire student body, it changes a lot of the stuff that we just talked about, you know what I mean? Some stuff. So, I, I don't disagree with you, Jeff, I think, I think you're right, and, and you, those points are very valid. So if that's the way we go, it's, it's just gonna kind of just change everything. I think we need to start with that.
And.
And then go from there.
Don't mean to jump in front of you, but the, the reason why I'm, I'm choosing to allow the students to decide is, go ahead.
Is, so, are you saying we should open up to nine through twelve to be on the board? Or open up eleven, twelve and let the student, let the entire student body vote?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
If you, if you eliminated, or if, if you didn't, if it didn't matter if it's a student of a board member, couldn't you still use the same process with the interview committee?
Yeah.
Right, that's, I think that's, that's, I, I, I think maybe you were thinking something different or heard something different. So I, I think nothing would change with our process. It just would be whomever applies, there's, there's no limits. It just wouldn't matter if you're, if you live with or related to a board member or staff member, right?
Unless.
But then it's just strictly student body choosing, not like staff?
Correct.
Okay, so you wouldn't have the staff members on it then?
The staff members have nothing to do with it. They.
So there wouldn't be an interview process then?
You could, you could have the students.
Okay, I misunderstood then, okay.
You could have the students pick a top three, and then, and then the staff, you know, Tina can select out of those three. Cause that still removes us from the, from the selection process of top three. Now, you could, you can, I can see how somebody says, well, you have these three, and one of them happens to be a board member's kid, so they're gonna, so you, you bring that back. I guess, the way we should decide, right? What, what is it that we want this student to do on the board? If the goal is to create a bridge between the students and the board, it makes sense that the students decide who their leader's gonna be. Because then, you're gonna speak for us, to us.
Right, so we had a regional principals meeting a few weeks ago, and we actually talked about this. And to remove bias, right? To remove bias from the board, the teachers, myself, Nelson. Most of the principals are going with a student election. And then how they move from there is beyond that.
So I mean, if you go that way, we're back to that original idea.
Right.
Of having the kids, if you want, get petitions.
Yes.
Have them do the speech on, uh, Spring Fest Day, and then do a vote and call it good.
Yes.
I think that's the best.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
You could've said that earlier.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't wanna put my own.
Hey Regina, did you get that?
I don't wanna put my own thinking on you, I wanted you guys to, but I offered the suggestion.
We definitely appreciate the input.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
Do you have a suggestion on the number of signatures on the position? Do you care? Ten? We gotta raise it more than ten!
We, we have to do twenty-five.
Twenty-five then? If they can't get twenty-five signatures, that's a problem.
I just didn't wanna make it a popularity contest if you had some individual that maybe not, not necessarily not popular, but.
Does the petitions even matter then? Do they even matter?
I just thought the process was important. You can do twenty-five.
I'm just asking, I don't care.
But if you're gonna bring it back to a popularity contest, if you can't find.
Right.
The twenty people to sign a petition for it.
Okay.
You're probably not gonna get the vote.
The process is important.
Twenty-five, I don't, I don't care, twenty-five. Perfect.
Wow, okay. Well, think about it, we'll put it in the policy, if you wanna change it, we'll change it.
Twenty-five is good.
That's about, usually about a third of the class's sizes, right?
I, I think.
Because remember, this would be nine through twelve. And I mean, we have, what, almost three hundred, almost what, three hundred kids? So I mean, if, if they can't get two hundred and fifty out of three hundred kids, then they're probably not a good representative of.
Well, you're.
So, this, this, my, my statement at this point is not going to help move us along. I, I, and I apologize for that. It's fine.
No, turn, yeah, turn it off. Just kidding.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just kidding.
I would like to nail down a little bit more what our expectations are for this position.
For sure.
Is this, is this a link between the board and the student body? Is this an effort to help the board make better decisions on behalf of the student body in our community?
I do.
So I, I just, and I think that having that perspective is going to help us. I, I think that is the start to how we are screening, how these kids, how these students are applying for the position. Um, I don't wanna decide on the method of selection, and then later decide on what the function of this individual will serve for the board.
Well, you're kinda gonna need.
That's moving backwards to me.
We're gonna, they're gonna need to know that, so when they give a speech, they know what they're running for.
Yes.
Well, that's what I need for form. I need the qualities that you want, right? So we can advertise it, so that that'll generate student interest.
When did you say Spring Fest was again, Tina?
Uh, the last Friday night.
Okay. So I mean, you know, that's, we, we have, we have, we have some time to figure that out. You know, I, uh, Regina, some of those models that we look at, did they have anything like that from some of the other schools? I was just curious if they, I mean, it wouldn't be hard to put that together. Yeah, 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 right, right. But I mean, we're just talking about, we can still go with our selection method, but we just gotta figure out how we wanna present that. I mean, that, that is one of the, you know, that is one of the, the risks that you take, you know, by having an open, an open process with a vote, you know, versus the interview method. But, but then the student is selected by the, uh, um, you know, by the student body this way. So, you know, we can put the process together, and then if you wanna give some thoughts to, I, I mean, I could, I could probably write what the board is looking for in about five minutes. You know what I mean? In terms of, you know, the conduit representative of the student body, help the board make decisions. Somebody who's gonna be reliable, that's gonna show up, that's going to be professional, and, uh, you know, all of those things. You know, I can put, I can put a draft together and send it to you if you'd like. Or if you have ideas, add to it, I don't, I'm just trying to make it easier, whatever you wanna do.
I think, I think what we've said so far about, well, we're hoping to get out of the student, like, you know, conduit to the student body, represent the thoughts of the student body, those are good. I think it's just more of a question of how to get that out of them. So I, I mean, I, I do think, first of all, besides the voting part, we would want them to take part in meetings as board members normally do. But maybe, but build in opportunities somehow for like, at least a couple times during the year to, to make a report to the board about, uh, so, and so it could just be during report time, but like, uh, you know, address and. like, you know, addressing issue that you or the student body feels the board has to consider.
Yeah.
Jason, maybe we all email you, these are a few qualities we're looking for, and this is what we wanna get out of this position.
Okay.
And then you can consolidate it and give it to Nelson.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll just include Nelson, and if Regina wants to be included in the email, we can just, I'll start a conversation there, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Because we're all gonna want something a little bit different.
Should we, one more question. Should we be expecting them to make reports back to the student body on what they, like, what their thoughts are, or anything there? I mean, something to think about, I guess, in, in those questions. Like, we don't necessarily have to answer that now, it's just a thought that came up in my head, so, like, during our meeting stuff, so, think about that, and if you...
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a good point, because there might be some things that the board might be interested in knowing, that we might charge this ex officio member we're going back to the student body to look into.
I mean, if there're gonna be a conduit between the...
Yeah.
Okay.
So what do you do, work that into like the forum, mornings?
Yeah, I think what we do is, once, once we have the process down, and we know what qualities we're looking at, then I think that, that Tina can then, you know, push that out, you know, to the student body more than once, you know, 'cause we'll have to, we'll have to get on the front end of this, so that they know they have to get the petitions, especially with the, with the date of Spring Fest. So we, we need to be thoughtful about our timeline, obviously, and let them know what we're looking for. And, you know, Tina will really have to promote this in terms of, you know, how big a deal this is. This is something that you're committing to, and, you know, once a month for a couple hours, and how you're representing the school, and, and, you know, really try to, to promote it. I think we can do that without, without any, without any question.
All right. You guys good? All right. I just wanted to make a communication for those that are tuning in, or whomever may watch this later, about, touch base about some concerns that were brought up by the SFA, you know, a couple months ago. I know that people have been working on different things, and one of the major concerns that they had were culture within our district and impact on student behavior. I just wanted to relay that, you know, I, I know that admin team's been working on things, we've, we've heard of a few examples of things that they've been doing, or like touring, I know that toured a neighboring school that, and looked into an alternative school program, and which we're excited to hear about, reports back from that. I'm aware that there's been talks about realigning, like, new time-away procedures to try to help alleviate some stress within the classroom with, you know, troubled kids. Our hopes are that some of these ideas may help revitalize some of the culture in our district. These changes are definitely gonna take some time, and I just want everybody to know that, you know, we haven't forgot about these issues. It just takes time to work through them, so. With that, we will go on to consensus motion number one. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jim and Kelly, so I'll give it to Jim. He was first. Kelly, do you want a second? Somebody want a second?
I will second it.
Kelly, second. All in favor? Impose? Abstain? No? Carried. Do I have a motion to approve consensus motion number two? Brian, do I have a second? Jim, all in favor? Impose? Abstain? Carried. No public participation? Do I have a motion to approve consensus motion number three? Jim, second? Brian, second. All in favor? Impose? Abstain? Carried. Nelson, would you like to set the agenda for next meeting, please?
Oh geez, I forgot all about that today. Help me, everyone. Do you wanna look it up for us? We had it in the minutes. I didn't look at it today, because we went into the audit committee. Thanks, Jackie.
Can, can we do five reports next time?
No, it'll be shorter. Usually I look at it before, but I didn't today. If you don't have it, that's okay, I can let you know, it's no big deal. I can't remember off the top of my head, I'm shot right now. Yeah, yeah, I know, really. Is it okay if I just, we'll just, yes.
Send it, just send us an email, no worries whatsoever.
We gotta figure it out, I just can't remember.
No worries, all right. With that, can we go on? Anyway, do I have a motion to approve consensus motion number four, where we will discuss proposed litigation? Motion, Jeff, motion. Do I have a second? Sarah, all in favor? Impose? Abstain? Carried. Thank you, everyone.